Ms. Clark, can you hold the roll to establish?
Ms. Fodor, here. Mr. Kelly.
Present.
Mr. Coles.
Here.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Ms. Palastreni.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
All right, everyone is here. As you'll notice, we have a new staff member tonight. His mom had open house, so he's with us. But I thought I'd ask, do you want to lead us in the pledge, Mikey? For those of you that don't know, this is my son, Mikey. He goes to Anshel-Mentor School. He's really good at the pledge. All right, so, all right, so look at the pledge.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right.
Should have made the national anthem to.
Right, that's, that's, that's scary.
This scare him into coming to the next one, really.
All right, can I, if any of you, Ms. Lyons, has anyone signed up to speak tonight?
No one did.
All right. Before you, you have the meeting minutes from August 15, 2024. Please review them at this time, for any additions, deletions, and/or corrections. Does anybody have any changes that they would like to make to the meeting minutes as they are presented?
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
All right.
Close? All right. Mr. Hedges.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. It's time we would ask your consideration of the ordinance approving 1% non-home rule sales tax. Ms. Lyons will make some comments about this. You do have in your packet an agenda supplement for Ms. Lyons. You also have a chart that was prepared by Mr. Khan, indicating which communities around us already have the tax. Pretty much all of our surrounding communities already have the 1% home rule tax, excuse me, non-home rule tax. But with that, I'm going to ask Lori, this is the primary funding source for our new public works garage. Roughly 70% of the revenue from this new tax would be going to the, to the public works building.
Um, well, I think, actually, Mr. Hedges covered that pretty well. There, many of our surrounding communities do have this tax. So we're asking you to do this. What we would do is turn our ordinance over to the Illinois Department of Revenue. They would be responsible for electing this tax and remitting it to us. And as Mr. Hedges said, this will fund the public works garage and the debt service required for that. There will be sufficient funds generated for that purpose.
One other thing that we've mentioned before is that, one good thing about a sales tax is it's estimated roughly 60-plus percent. It's usually paid by non-residents. And especially here, where we have all the truck stops, so people, those are transient, come up, fight it, whether it's a restaurant or a truck stop, those are mostly non-residents. Same truth. Roughly a little less than 50% of the car dealership are non-residents. So we believe that more than 50% of this would come from non-residents, as opposed to like options. Thank you.
I'll open this up for general discussion, but I would like to say that, you know, as we, we looked over the water and sewer and infrastructure projects over the last several years, one of the challenges we had was creating a revenue source, which is why we had to raise water rates, unfortunately, which has been very impactful, especially in today's economy, to our, most of our residents. It's not something that we wanted to do, but something we, we felt that we had to do for the future of our community. And as such, you know, we had talked at the time, when we went through this in October, about going to referendum to raise the sales tax, and because that was our only option. Cook County previously, not-home rule communities within Cook County had the ability to just impose this tax, but outside of Cook County, you had to go to referendum for it. But as part of the budgeting process this year, the Illinois State Legislature has changed it so that we can impose it via ordinance. And so I go into that explanation for those of you in the audience that may not know the, how we got here. So I'll open it up for some discussion and I'll support.
If you could just kind of explain then, the 1% then that we used to always have, and that's where this is coming from, correct?
So I think that there's also some confusion. No, so that's different.
That's different, okay, that's.
That's completely different. The Illinois, as part of that, the Illinois State Legislature in the same conversation, which is why it's confusing.
That's fine.
Has eliminated, beginning January 26, the grocery tax, which is a 1% tax on all food items that are sold at the grocery store within your corporate boundaries. And that was a tax that the Illinois State Legislature removed. That tax didn't go into any of their funding. It went directly to the municipality where the grocery store was located. So, you know, we stand, as, as an example, we stand to lose, I don't know, probably around $30,000 or $40,000 due to, to our one grocery store, but other municipalities that are larger or have more diverse grocery store offerings stand to lose millions. And so then another conversation that will probably be forthcoming, depending on what direction the IML goes, is whether or not we choose to re-impose that or not. Because, like I said, that is a direct, direct tax from the law that goes right into our general fund to fund our operations, that the Illinois State Legislature is now taking away.
Can I make one point? There are other retailers in Hampshire that do charge the 1% grocery tax, so it's.
I apologize, it's prepared, or not, not, right?
It's any type of food product. So you could go to Casey's and we charge 1% on certain, certain purchases. So it's not just at grocery stores themselves.
It's based on the product?
Correct.
So as long as the product is sold within the municipality, okay. I apologize. Thanks for bailing me out. Any other discussion?
If I can ask, because I just want to make sure I'm clear, because it's a 1% non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and a service occupation tax.
I, I can comment on that. So, it's not a sales tax on service itself.
Okay.
It's on the servicemen that do service. So in other words, if you purchase a service that has a ancillary to the service, you receive a widget, let's say. The sales, the serviceman will pay a sales tax on the widget, and then you might only pay $500 for the service and not the tax on the widget, because he's already paid it. So that's how we get the tax, one way or the other. Does that make sense? It's not on the service itself. It's just on the widget that's part of the service.
So using some examples then, like a plumber, in, you know, a disposal, you know, you're paying for the disposal that they're putting in there, and then there's a service of putting it in there.
Right, so he might charge you $300, let's, keep it simple. $300 for the installation and the disposal. So when you get your bill, you'll pay $300. He's already paid sales tax on the $100 disposal, so you don't have to pay it again. So the tax is actually on him rather than on you. You're not paying the tax. He's paying the tax, but in your $300, you're really paying that tax.
Okay, so that's where he is. And I just, I just want to be clear on it. That's why it was just, that part was confusing then. So using the plumber again, the service is being done at my house here in Hampshire, but the plumber has bought the disposal in, you know, Gilbert's.
Correct.
So he's paid the tax in Gilbert's towards the item, and so I don't have to pay it here in Hampshire. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mechanics, same thing?
I, um, I'm not even sure what sales people, like, if I go to the next door and have my car repaired, they generally will have a list of each of the items, and then the sales tax that I'm paying. So they are filing what's called a reseller certificate. So they're reselling those items to me. So I, I'm not sure exactly what serviceman it is, but I, I'm just, I'm 100% certain that it's, you're not actually enacting a service tax. It's the tax on the servicemen that include these products in their service for you.
Okay, because, because when I started thinking about it, it's like, okay, the plumber, the roofer, the salon where you pick up products, etc. I mean, so there was a whole bunch of those, but it doesn't.
If you, if you buy like shampoo at the salon, you should be charged a sales tax there, and that would come with the shampoo. If they, that's an excellent point, though. You're going to pay $50 to have your hair cut with a shampoo. Inside that, that $50 is $4 for shampoo, or, you know, like 40 cents for shampoo, I don't know. But that, they, that service person has paid tax on that shampoo that's, that's coming with your cut.
Okay, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Since we're on that topic, page 11 of the packet, the first whereas, and it's section 8-11-1.4. It speaks, the way the language is in there, it says, impose a tax upon all persons engaged in such municipality in the business of making sales of service. So like, we're talking about a construction, a plumber, whoever may be, right? On public infrastructure or property tax relief, both of the selling price of all tangible personal property transferred by such servicemen, either in the form of tangible personal property or in the form of real estate as an incident of the sale of service. So is this the one where we're saying that disposal gets taxed? But in this, it makes it seem like, but in this, it makes it seem like that tax isn't imposed where they're purchasing it. It's at a Home Depot or Lowe's outside of our area, but that in the Village of Hampshire, if, if they bought it for 100, and, and they're including it in the overall $300 as 100, $100 of that, that they have to pay $100 sales, or a 1% tax on that $100 to her, because that service happens in our.
So it's, it's dependent on whether that serviceman or servicewoman has filed with where they purchased the item, either a reseller certificate, where it would be included in the price and then paid to the Village of Hampshire, no matter what, if, if the work is done in Hampshire, or if they have not filed that and paid the tax at their retailers. And then it would be paid Gilbert's or wherever they purchased the item.
Okay, it doesn't reference where they purchased the item. It references where they do the work.
So.
And where they transfer the good.
So maybe I'm not explaining.
No, you're, thank you. Yeah, no, that's, but part of their work is flaring that piece of personal property, what we call in the law, channel, and that's part of their work. So again, this is the direct quote from the statute. It's sometimes statutory language, especially in the property tax, and the personal tax isn't the clearest. But this reverts back to where that citation is found, whether it's the action of the purchase or the action of the disposition of that piece of personal property, like with the treasure or the finance director.
I had a couple of questions. I was just, as you shared, Mr. Hedges, the, the intent of this, at least when it was discussed in the Budget Committee, is to cover the cost of the public works building, which is badly needed, and we don't have other ways of funding that project. So before I get to some of the detailed question on this, on who will and won't be taxed based on language in here, is there a way for us to write within this ordinance that this 1% tax would only be utilized on construction of, because I know in here it talks about, it, it actually makes it a little vague. It says, "for either property tax relief or for public infrastructure." So it can basically be used for anything, so we can say that any expenditure within our village garnered by this is helping not raise property taxes, because we're taking it by, or we're receiving revenue by a sales tax. So it really kind of leaves it wide open. Is there a way for us to limit this in this ordinance, to say that this 1% would only be used, any revenue generated from this would only be used in the construction of municipal, new municipal buildings, such as the Public Works Building, the Administrative Building, or the Police Building, when those come up, and that it wouldn't, those revenues would not be utilized for anything other than those purposes? Is that possible within this ordinance?
I, I believe that is possible.
It is possible. Could I ask why you want to tie your end like that?
Because I think that we've already been talking about a lot of fees and, and charging a lot, raising rates, doing fees, but they have very specific purposes while we're doing it. To upgrade our water and sewer systems, that they were very specific in why we were doing that. In this, the original conversation was very specific to help pay for a public works building or to cover those type of costs. The way that it's written now, future boards, future administrations can really just have this go into the general fund and use it for anything that they would like. And so asking residents, or even 60% non-residents, to pay an extra 1%, I think it's fair also to say, this is exactly where that revenue would go and only to this purpose.
We definitely could do that, but I disagree with your statement that it could go to the general fund for any purpose. It is, it's in the statute that it says it's for infrastructure, so water and sewer, roads, buildings, you know, those types.
Or property tax relief.
Well, to the extent it's used for those purposes, I believe.
That's not how it's worded. It says expenditure.
Those purposes and other funds would be, transfer would not be used to that. I believe that's what they consider property tax.
The wording that I'm reading, since this is going to be an ordinance, states that expenditure on public infrastructure or for property tax relief.
I know in the, in the, in the prior statutes, when there were non-home rule communities that were adopting, you know, a not-home rule tax, it said "and/or" property tax relief. So.
And this is the direct language from the statute, and that's why it's quoted, as you know. So let's go back to the original question. Can you do it? Does the board control the purse to allow for this? It does. And commonly, you'll always hear people say that the board controls the purse. How funds are spent, it goes through this legislative body, which includes the president on votes, super majority of the party. I think that there is another time that you can do it too, and I would be remiss not to say that, but we do have a budgeting process, an appropriation process that goes through, and you can make those expenditures at that point in time, rather than have it be a law, but have it be for the allocation of funds. But that, your question is, can you put that limitation there? You absolutely can. The question of practice is outside of, above my pay grade, outside of my wheelhouse. But I am telling you that you have another opportunity to do it. When the money starts coming in, you have a budgetary process, and during that budgetary process, you can say that we're going to estimate this, and this will be allocated to that, unless I'm wrong, and I would ask the finance director to. And that might be a more, in case there was an emergency or something, and we could use it for something else, that might be a more, uh, responsible way to do it, and I'm not, I don't use that word insultingly, but just a way that gives us a little bit more flexibility, where we know that you're passing this, endeavoring to ensure that it goes to the project that we talked about. But if something comes up, and I always say if a boiler breaks, you want that flexibility to be able to take that money and take care of that boiler. We can make the argument that it's an infrastructure cost. I'm using an example, like we were talking about the plumber before. I would like to see as much flexibility for you, and I think it's kind of my job to give you guys as much flexibility as possible. And I am answering a yes or no question with a paragraph.
I appreciate that. I guess to the, to follow up to the second part of that, then, the way that you are stating this is, these funds could be used for any purpose within the village.
Well, so the, the plain language of the statute as it reads, as this came through, does allow for some flexibility with regards to that. So, yes. So I would say, I know the old language did not have that, but if you read, if you look at page 13, section 7, page 5 of the ordinance itself, if you look at the third subsection C, "any other or further uses permitted under applicable law," and it gives a litany of statutes. So there is some flexibility about the uses. If you want to constrain it, we can constrain it now. We could constrain it during the budgetary process, or we can make it endeavoring, and when we have your budgetary meetings, Mr. Chairman and Budget Committee, we could ensure that this is funneled towards, that is an operational thing, rather than make it law of the, that are in the books for the village.
And theoretically, an ordinance can be changed by the village.
Anytime we want. Yep. We call a meeting, have a, have a forum, we can pass it.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I, I'll comment on my opinion on that in a second. The question, the other question I have is, it also states the tax would not apply to anything that's titled and registered by an agency of the state's government. So vehicle sales, truck sales, anything that's titled would not generate extra revenue from the 1% sales tax, correct?
Can you point to your section?
It's right above what we were just talking about on page 11. It actually starts on page 10, whereas section 8-11-1.3, it says, "impose a tax on all persons engaged in the business of selling tangible personal property other than that of an item of tangible personal property which is titled and registered by an agency of this state's government."
And that's the case right now. We do, so we're exempt from sales tax. Any governmental agency can obtain a governmental.
No, what it, what it's saying is any personal property titled and registered by an agency of the state.
Right, by an agency of the state. Right, I, I.
We are a government. Of the state's government. So the DMV is a state, is an agency of this state's government.
That's, that's a close but incorrect reading of it, respectfully trusting. That is, it's agency of, of the state that has the title. So it exempts us. That's the very fancy lawyerly IML we've got in it, language to say, if it's ours, we are exempt of that state tax.
And, and any, any other governmental.
Any other government.
That's not what this says.
It is, it is, I'm sorry, that's exactly how I read it, Mr. Kelly. It's, it's any, anybody that holds the title, that's a state agency. You, you, if your, your personal vehicle, you hold the title, so therefore you're not exempt. But if the state of Illinois holds the title, because they own the vehicle, they are exempt. And I will pin to that on the record. So we are being recorded. This language is the language that reflects the fact that state water reclamation districts, villages are exempt from this tax.
Any division, any division of state government.
A subdivision of state government, yeah.
So where a corp, Village of Hampshire is a corporate.
I understand that governments are, are exempt from taxes. The way that I read this is it says "titled and registered by an agency of the state's government." The DMV is an agency of the state government. You title and register your vehicle by that agency, with that agency.
The state, yeah, and the, the state is not Shakespeare, right? It's not known for writing very clear statutes, especially with regards to taxation, and very comfortable with this language as it relates.
So on the record, vehicles, anything titled within this, so long as it's not titled to a government agency, will receive the 1% tax.
7:22 PM on the record tonight. This exempts villages, water reclamation districts, state governments. A vehicle that gets sold two blocks away will not be exempt unless it's sold, sold to the state of Illinois, the village. Water inflammation district. And it's unclear. I mean, honestly, these, these, I worked at the state, other people sitting near me have worked at the state, they don't write, this is not Shakespeare. This is not well-written. This isn't good dialogue. This is very arcane language. It gets used and recycled and causes problems, which is, I'm glad it does sometimes, because it makes for good lawyering, but it is, this is the exemption for governments to not have to pay this tax.
I guess those were the questions I had. As I said, with the restriction in the ordinance, my ask would be that we do restrict it only to those uses for which we initially intended this tax to be used for. It's a way for us to not have to go to referendum for a bond to build a building, which then theoretically takes it out of the hands of the people, other than they elected us to make these type of decisions. I don't think it's unfair to do that. I do think, I'm not saying for this board or this administration, but this is an in perpetuity ordinance. It's not like a one-year ordinance. I think we need to safeguard against the future of there always being a reason why the funds need to go somewhere else other than what they were originally intended for. So that would be my ask. Again, just my ask.
One, one point of, to make there is we still will bond. We will have.
We won't go to referendum for the bond. This tax would cover that. That's why I said it avoids a referendum, going to vote, the people selecting whether or not they choose.
The debt service.
Something that I would hope they would pay for, because it's so badly needed. I think that us getting these funds while hitting people, not necessarily always residents, because of the truck stop, we are lucky to that, still should be limited to the purpose of why it was discussed in budget, why it was brought to the board, and why it's being, why I thought it was being brought to this here.
If I can ask, Trustee Kelly Dunn, does that mean then, that when this particular garage then is paid off in 20 years, or whatever the number of years is, that we would have to come back and review the ordinance and redo it to designate a new place that we want to put the money?
So no, great question. What I was saying is that it should be limited to new construction of municipal buildings, and that's where I had said, whether it's the public works garage first, or if there's a municipal building as a part of that campus, that's a police department and an administrative building. As this community grows, this amount will grow in the same manner. And so we may end up generating more revenue than what the bond is needed for that street's building. And in that case, the extra revenue could go towards a public administration building or the police building, but that it should only be utilized for the new construction of municipal buildings. And at some point, if, in the same way we talk about the CASAD program, if there is no new construction of municipal buildings needed, then we shouldn't be collecting the revenue of 1% tax.
So would we have to go back then and then change it to, you know, the water plant or like materials inside?
If a whole new board gets on here, they can change whatever we do, however they want to change it, right? Am I, am I right? Yes. So it's a moot point. We can do it now for our liking, but a new board gets on here, they can change. So it's a moot point, really. It really is. But I mean, we, we could do it to appease everybody here, but it's a moot point. A new board gets on here, no, do whatever they want to do.
I mean, we could, but then that would be up to that, that board. You're, you're correct. To me, that's not a moot point, but you are correct that that could be changed.
I think that the, I like the fact that the Budget Committee can decide the different projects that we're going to fund and have that board run on that. I, I like having a little bit, I don't want to say vaguer, because it really does come back down to, you know, municipal roads and streets, bridge, sidewalks, drain. I mean, it gives all these different things that, you know, sometimes we don't have money to pay for anyway, so it's covered in there. I, I like the fact, you know, I mean, we're not going to start a project and then, and then pull out of it. If we're having to pay for 20 years of it, we have to pay for 20 years of it in some way or another. So if they're not going to, if a future board decides not to use those funds for it, they're going to have to find another funding source to be able to cover it, so that we can pay our expenses. So for me, I, I kind of like the way it, it is right now. It allows us the ability, you know, to, to focus where it's going to be, but if we move forward with a garage, we're going to be responsible for paying for it for 20 years, or however long it takes it to pay it off. So. And then should something else come up that we want to pay for it, then that's what the budget process and the Budget Committee can, can do. That's my personal opinion on that part. I did just want to just double and triple check for that section 7, and, you know, it's, it says, "a village shall only expend the proceeds." And then it says, "for A, expenditures related to municipal roads and streets, access roads, bridges and sidewalks, waste disposal, cistern, all the way through the whole thing." Related to, and municipal roads and streets is covered by, I mean, the garage is covered by that, because it's related to.
I guess.
Roads and streets, the equipment that we need.
Yes.
To here, okay.
Yes, yeah, I've always pinned to that. I've always been of that opinion, even from before, when we were first looking at this issue. I 100, 100% believe that the funds that we collect under this ordinance or this levy of tax can be used for that project.
Because related to is vague anyway. Related to, we can argue that in 15 different ways, but that was my.
Doesn't B open it up to anything, like, the very next one?
Yeah, but it's, it's got all these other little things. Yeah.
Well, no, what I mean is, that's part A, and then it says so on either A or B, and B is really, opens up, right?
Just, Ms. Fodor?
Quick question. Section 8 on page 6 of this ordinance, page 14 of the packets. Can I just ask why this, because I understand this comes directly from the state language. Why is aviation fuel excluded? Do you have any?
They're good lobbyists.
Okay, okay. Well, I would ask.
If you, you talked about the grocery tax before, if you look through that grocery tax, you will see these very odd items not being included. I would like to say that there's great public policy being debated. It's not, it's, there is, there's good lobbyists on it.
Okay, yeah.
And if there was some kind of weird thing with aviation fuel, like, United Airlines was buying fuel for fare, their jets in O'Hare, like in Decal.
Okay.
And like, Decal was getting all the sales guy. It was, yeah.
It was like the Kekkei issue.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, it was, it's citation, right? Where it's, a lot of the times the sales tax issue, which is what we went back to before, is where the allocation of sales tax comes from. I think, because we're the highest around.
So we just need to hire lobbyists for, for.
You're not endorsing anyone.
I meant for people who shop for groceries. Uh, and I just wanted to point out, Huntley is already eight and a quarter, Eldridge is eight and a half, Sigmore is eight, St. Charles is eight and a half, Carpentil is nine, Gilbert's where you will not actually find a hard first door to buy that disposal, by the way. Hampshire is sitting at seven. Um, and even if we raise it one percent, and I am not a fan of raising taxes or paying more taxes, but I am a fan of not throwing good money after bad. And if we don't do this, that means that our public works, equipment rots and it's expended and it is an irresponsible use of my money and my neighbor's money. And I just want to say, it still leaves us at the lowest tax rate in the area, tied with Gilbert's and Sigmore's. So.
Question trustee Futter, uh, even though it says aviation fuel, can you, can we just verify for those that may watch this because of a lot of conversations, this is not added on to the motor fuel that you buy at a gas station?
Hundred percent, okay.
So when somebody says Hampshire is always more expensive than neighboring town, village of Hampshire has nothing to do with it.
This has nothing to do with that.
No.
But also, I would like to say that, you know, we did get for this project, we did, we've been reaching out, trying to get grants out of the state of Illinois, and, and we actually got a two million dollar grant from Roger Christian Morty's office for this project.
That's amazing.
So, you know, we've tried and we will continue to try, passing this or not, to get any type of funding. As a matter of fact, I talked to Congressman Foster yesterday about reminding him that we still have a whole lot of projects coming up. So, I mean, you know, we're, 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 we've been very good, I shouldn't say we, it's a royal we, it's staff. Staff has been really good about applying for funding mechanisms that don't rely on the backs of our residents. And, um, I also would like to say that I understand your point of view, and I'm not, not shutting it down or anything, but I feel that this is pretty restrictive with the exception of that last section, which is B. And so, and so what I'm saying, I, I say that just for the point of, you know, as, as we go down this path, you know, anybody that looks over the ordinances, I mean, you, you think that they, they're going to understand what this is for. I mean, we've, we've done a really good job of trying to not set a precedent unless it's necessary or do our research and look at the intent of what things were passed for, whether it be the facade improvement program or anything of that nature. And, you know, I, I just, I would hope that future boards would do the same, is all I'm saying. And I, I just, I don't necessarily know that us wagging our finger like we know what's best for the future, we can do our best, but, but restricting, I've seen other governmental agencies in this community restrict themselves to the point because they didn't want to do something and now they're paying for it. You know, like not raising their taxing rate or something when they had the opportunity, you know, and now they're, now they're playing catch-up, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to restrict future boards if we don't need to. And for that matter, if they will have the authority to do so later, I don't understand, I don't, I don't agree with doing it now.
I, I do want to be clear, though, on something you said, this does not have restrictions. It has an A and a B, A has restrictions listed, and B then opens it up to any expense.
I, I disagree because there's language in there that specifically lists the attempt.
It's a relief of property tax, you don't have to raise taxes.
That's the gotcha, and that's where somebody's been, that's, I don't disagree with that.
So that there's not restrictions, I've just, we have to be honest about it.
So the board has the ability to restrict net assets, um, for, for a particular purpose without it being in the ordinance. So if I'm directed to place all of the, you know, additional one percent sales tax into, um, you know, segregate those or restrict those net assets for a building purpose, I will, you know, that will be done, um, without it being in this ordinance per se.
Mr. Kelly, can I clarify your opinion, were you suggesting that it was, should or should not be used for future buildings? For example, a nomination, should.
Should.
So you don't want to remove the tax in twenty-five years when the public works garage stayed for, but make sure we use it for the building?
Well, not, not just that, I don't, I, at some point, the revenue from this will be more than what is needed to pay for the property, for that. And the extra revenue should go towards, whether it's the police station, the administrative building, and continue until those are paid off.
And through the budgeting process, you can restrict that exactly, that, exactly that way, through the budgeting process.
Correct, and it also can be opened up beyond that. Um, I know there has been debate back and forth, but I wasn't on the board, others were, but I believe places for eating tax was instilled for the facade program and to help fund that. And while it does fund that, it is a lot higher than what the facade program takes in and those revenues are used for general fund. That is a tax that was passed for a purpose and now is utilized, the majority of it, for other than what the original purpose was. Not that that's a bad thing, in that case, that is one example of where it has done that. The board could say, all places for eating tax goes into a special account just for the purpose of why it was initially passed, looking up the minutes or whatever it is. I don't ever see the board being able to do that because then it puts the budget in a very hard predicament, right? I mean, at least that's how it seemed in the budget process. So while we could do those things, absolutely, we could as a part of the budget process. We have a concrete example of where that's already not the case. So that's the only reason why I bring it up, I, to your point, though, Mr. Hedges, and to your question, I think any new construction now or in the future, this should be able to be used. And I don't, I mean, that may be fifty years from now before we don't need another one, but by then we probably need a new water treatment facility or something else, right?
Capital plans, sixty-five years, we plan.
Yeah, so I'm not saying like time bound this and it goes away, I'm just saying it should, if we're saying this is why we need this, this is why we're bringing it up and why we don't go to a referendum. I think that it's beholden to us to say this is what that is used for.
What are we feeling, guys?
Time to vote.
Time to vote.
As it is? Okay, fair enough. I will entertain a motion approving one percent sales, uh, one percent non-home roof self, sales tax as is presented.
Make your motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments, and or concerns?
Just for my clarification, there is no amendment to this and it is as written, can be utilized for either property tax relief or the purposes on point A that trustee Paul Strini stated, am I correct on that vote?
That's a motion.
Okay, it's a motion that's on the table, but I would also like to say that the intent is clear from this board of what it will be used for now and moving forward.
I wholeheartedly agree, the purpose and what we're all talking about is for a public works garage to house, follow the millions of dollars of equipment that the taxpayers have paid for to make sure that we can fully give us out of those.
And that we have to stop, and it will help us stop spending the tax, taxpayer dollars on countless and very expensive repairs on this apartment because it's sitting outside in the weather, rotting, and protecting our employees from having to scrape out their trucks in the icy conditions after being out for hours in the cold.
All of that being said, if I hear in a budget meeting, then it's not the, with that, incredibly favorable. As I think most of the residents and board members would be as well, so.
I think that's. You could say this though, I mean, that's what I was saying, because that's, that's what it would be, and I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I mean, I.
Motion's been made in second, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you call the roll?
They have to go. And we're currently in comments.
Okay. Would you like to call a roll?
No.
Is there, can you call a roll?
Mr. Kelly?
Oh.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Mrs. Palastring?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Futter?
Aye.
Motion passed by one.
Okay, thank you very much, great discussion.
With that, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a variance for four eleven Campion Drive. Uh, Mr. Khan will explain this, and the residents in the room with us as well.
The petitioner is property owner, Mr. Cortero, reflecting a various, keep those subdivision orders to offer construction of a shed in the easement. Uh, public hearing was held by the planning, he's only commissioned on August twenty-sixth, and they recommended approval by a vote of six-two-zero. Um, the background on this situation is that prior to twenty twenty-four, Safeville was not reviewing, um, zoning ordinance for compliance, thus how slab for the shed was filled mistakenly. So to bring this into compliance and legally allow the shed in the easement of areas is needed. Um, from moving forward, I do want the board to know that we are reviewing the zoning code for compliance and permits, uh, so that this should not be an issue moving forward, this is, uh, an exception to the situation, not the rule. Um, so if there's any further information, I'd provide, answer any questions.
Was Mr. Cortero charged for this process?
No.
So the, the resident was not charged as a part of this?
Yeah, the public hearing fee was not charged.
Okay. That's my first question.
Can I ask, the, the one concern I have is because it is in, I, I understand all the mistakes and everything that was done, but it is in the utility easement, um, and, and I understand the release and everything that's in there right now. But are we able to go in there, are the utilities able to with this slab there? Is there enough area around that easement where we can still get cable put into the ground or?
So from my understanding, the utilities are already underground.
Okay.
Um, the situation would be if the media comm had to come in relocate or fix their line, then they, they would still have the right to have the shed removed, the slab removed. Um, but I can't see how often it happens, so the utility is already there, so there's no.
Do they, do they pour the slab on, on top of the utilities?
There, we don't know exactly where the utilities are, we know they're in the easement, but we don't know if the slab is exactly on top of comments and, uh, A T and Ts and media accounts.
Well, ninety percent of the time, if it's a utility company, they're doing directional boring anyway. They just happened in my side yard, tore up all the grass and stuff, and they had to dig, but. I understand that this is, this isn't allowed, but I'm just going to go on record, it was something that, it was our, it was our, it was our mess, it wasn't our staff screw up, okay, it was, it was our contract, in fact, uh, overseer, so I, I don't. My opinion is I don't, I don't understand how we don't approve this, I just tell them we messed up.
Yep. I totally agree with that, I just, I just want to make sure that we can still, you know, put a phone line in.
But it, but there's still, it's, it's still a risk, it's still a risk for the property owner with it being in the easement. If the utility company says, hey, that's got to move, it's a risk to the utility, it's a risk the property owner understands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same with like a fence, right, we allow fence and easement and stuff, and if they got to tear it up, we got to tear it up.
Okay. Well, that was part of my question, if utilities needs to access, who pays for the demo?
It's on the, it's on the record.
Can the residents sell it like this without creating an issue? Will they have to do a new owner after, or is this their floor, like my granddaughter did, or how does it work?
Well, the ordinance allows it to be there if you need it, um, so for you, it, the waiver would carry on with any future.
Okay, it would go with the lifetime of the shed?
Correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this topic?
We've made sure that this isn't getting out again.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And the resident has been apologized to.
I'm sorry that you've had to go through this. If you haven't already been apologized to.
It's been postponed a couple of times too, because the zoning commission wanted more information, so.
And an ordeal for him. Thank you for sticking with us. We're not setting a precedent, don't do this, because we will make you tear it up, if you do it without. Yeah, okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the variance.
Don't move.
Question, question.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
It's not, Safeville now responsible for covering the cost of the planning and zoning meetings since they're the ones that approved something that was outside of zoning.
Mr. Kelly, I, I just like to say, this is technically not really their mistake either, we had not assigned them that task. And so this is a collective error.
Okay, so it's not just a standard practice for.
No, we realized we had a gap in our reviews.
Okay, I thought this was a standard practice that they would make sure that they're following what the.
We've added to go to sponsors.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We do have a whole bunch of sheds and, and all kinds of things, and easements around town, where permits were not applied for, and they were just settled out of permit, this was actually, he applied for a permit, got approval, pointed where he told, said he would, and then it was turned out, understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And one other, he has had no additional expense other than what a normal permit would cost.
Correct.
From us.
Okay.
I was saying, so we have first and a second, are we comfortable? Because it's a zoning matter, do we need a roll call, or can we do all in favor?
You will call.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Scott Strine?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Futter?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, sir, again, I apologize for this mess.
You're welcome to leave, you don't have to hang around.
You're welcome to stay, absolutely welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thank, thank you, thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration, um, excuse me, of a motion approving a five-year purchase contract with Exxon for tasers in the amount of thirty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. Uh, Ms. Lai as well, let's get one, I'm sorry. We would ask for consideration of an ordinance approving text, a text amendment to section six dash twelve dash two of the zoning ordinance regarding prohibited graphics, Mr. Khan.
So the B D C has been performing question and discussion, already having internally illuminated wall signs uh, in the downtown special graphics area, uh, if I remember correctly, the B D C doesn't believe or believes that it doesn't fit the historical nature of a main street or downtown. Uh, so they recommended to, uh, list as a prohibited graphic, the downtown special graphics area. Uh, because this is zoning ordinance, has been commissioned for recognition. Uh, so plan's mission held public hearing, uh, August twenty-sixth, they recommended denial, the text amendment six oh, they did not believe that we should limit the types of graphics that are allowed on any property in the village. Um, and if the B D C wanted to, oh, limit internally illuminated wall signs, they can do so through the facade graph program. Um, if somebody wants to come in for public money and they want to put a wall sign, they can use the facade grid as a way to limit those in the future. Um, if there's any questions, okay, so.
And Mr. Khan, if this board chooses to override the zoning board, what would require, what would that require? It's a norm about A is, so it is not, a super majority is required if it's a special use, this is not a special use, this is a tax amendment. So it would just be a standard majority vote for non-negative votes, so four ayes, affirmative votes, or abstentions.
I do have a question, if we want to extend State Street or Main Street from the dentist, dentist office down to Allen Road, is this going to shy people away from coming, businesses, they want to build something?
So that's a, that's a matter of opinion, I would say, I would defer to the B D C.
Well, I just figured I asked you because you're, the realtors, the developers, they're talking to you, that's B D C.
I, I think, I certainly understand the beautification committee's, um, concerns about downtown and not having backlit signs and a lot of things downtown. Uh, but I do think the B D C has some very good points also about letting companies do what they want to do. I, I, I'd rather defer to somebody who was at the meeting because I wasn't. Uh, but yeah, you have a point, Mr. Coth, yes. Any restrictions on business could throw some cold water on it, but I don't think it would be a decision maker, that, that'd be my thing.
Uh, Mr. Kelly, and, or, you know, we, Mr. Squall here as well, do either of you guys want to add some color as to what your thought? Processes with this or how it came about?
I'll take a sidestep and speak to the footprint of qualifying projects, and from my understanding currently, um, qualifying applicants for the facade get grant program stopped the creek, basically. Whether or not the downtown State Street Business District is extended or not, that's the, you know, future, uh, decisions to be made, but the footprint can always be modified for qualifying projects. So if businesses do come in down there, would this affect them? You'd have to address it at a later date or increase the size of the footprint of where the qualifying projects would fit. Uh, that just speaks to the extension of state and whether this would affect backlit signs in that area. Um, I'm going to talk about the backlit signs for a minute and just, um, through the various committees, both beautification and B D C, and speaking to business owners and grant applicants, it has been, uh, pretty uniform and pretty unanimous in terms of, um, folks, uh, hoping that the downtown, its parents would go a direction more of the hanging signs, whether they're lit or not, is, is their choice, but the backlit signs has been a very vocal, a, a much discussed subject and one that folks aren't so much in favor of anymore. It might have been fine back in the seventies, eighty, eighties, it might have been the norm years ago, but it's been very much consistently discussed as something that they would like to not see. Backlit, surface bounded signs, like you see, uh, I don't know, in front of. Backlit, surface-mounted signs like you see, uh, I don't know, in front of the Garden Berry, the neon sign, or the neon cow, the one above the coffee shop. Signs like that, when they're lit at night, they stand out. And this has come up, um, multiple times with a few applicants in the past. One most recently was a sign proposal for a, a very large, uh, twenty-five feet wide, about three feet tall, uh, illuminated LED sign that was going to be hung on the front of the State Farm office. Needless to say, when we saw the size and the magnitude of it and what it would look like at night, this was definitely something we needed to address. Can you imagine a number of signs like that in the downtown? It's different when you drive Route seventy-two or something to that effect. Or in, in Grand Road, they're everywhere, illuminated signs, that's common, that's normal, but you want to see that in a historic business district? The consensus has been, not really. Um, it's not the fact that it's litted, but it's the fact that it's backlit and they're usually very large. Uh, hanging a suspended paddle sign, I'll call it, perpendicular to the front of the building, and you have a few lights on it to light it up. That seems to be the direction people want to see us go in terms of what's down here for signage. So, um, just a couple of points, I, I thought, if that helps. That I think is, was primarily the driving force behind this. Because a few proposals for signs have come up, backlit signs, large signs, and well-lit signs that, um, we've gone back and discussed with the applicants and said, well, we'd like to help you with an approval of a grant, but I don't know if as a backlit sign proposal, it will be supported. What else can you do? And most applicants said, I don't know, what do you want me to do? And we said, well, look at some of the other signage, and they're like, okay. They amend their application and off we go. So that's really one of the reasons, I, I think the primary drive behind why you see this before you, if that makes sense. Does that help? I hope it helps.
Yeah, I think Mr. Squall said background eloquently, I do want to clarify one statement that was made by the planning and zoning because it's not really accurate. The BDC does not have the ability to restrict any business from doing anything we make recommendations to the village board. Uh, and so, please don't think that it can be restricted by the BDC in any way, whether it's through the facade program or not. The, the BDC is a recommending body and not a legislative body, so just, just to clear that statement that was in the findings.
Like, weren't we just talking about, um, light pollution and limiting residential lighting, like just a few months ago?
Yes.
So why would it be okay for businesses to?
That was a very good question.
Make one.
I don't care. I'm sorry, but I don't mean to be blinded by the business any more than my neighbor.
It's come up in all areas of the village, she's saying with signs have been issued. In all areas of the village. And we've got to go back and get them to turn them down in some cases.
Just a, a clarifying point as well, this would be for any new sign going forward. If a sign is already on a building, it's grandfathered prior to this, so it's not like the, uh, Garden Berry would have to go change their signs or some other backlit would have to change theirs.
But if they were.
But if they were to remove and change their sign, if this were to pass, then they would not be allowed to go to a backlit.
That sounds good to me.
Any other questions? Is ready for vote?
If we don't want lit signs, are we voting P or N? Because even after the explanation, I was still, I was more confused, so.
You are voting yes to approve the ordinance, you're restricting the ability for them to put a sign.
Thank you.
If we vote no, it's to.
To, to leave it as it is, to allow it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I need.
Excellent.
Though, just the one point then is the fact that if someone wants a facade grant and they have a sign in there, they just, they don't have to have, have that to the grant. So it's, we don't have any control over that part anyway, because they'll just say, okay, I'll pay for that myself.
That's right.
And they're not asking for it, so it doesn't.
Correct.
I'll entertain a motion approving the, uh, text amendment for the zoning ordinance regarding granted graphics.
So moved.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, or concerns? Uh, zoning ordinance, can you call vote please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Scott Street?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Um, Spoder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coath?
No.
Motion yes is for two.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, with that, Mr. Mayor, now we would ask for consideration of a motion to approve a five-year purchase contract with Axon for tasers in the amount of thirty-eight thousand fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. Ms. Lyons?
Um, right, so she pan了here. Essentially, um, the tasers that we have, um, equipped our officers with currently are no longer going to be supported in your lego. How do you support a taser? Well, um, it includes, um, being able to get cartridges. So our tasers, um, need to be replaced. So we're asking you to enter into this purchase contractor, yeah, purchase contract. It's a, it is a five-year thing and we will continue to, um, budget for each of the payments over the next five years.
So we really don't have much of a choice. There's not, as far as tasers go, there's only a few players in the space. And we can't get parts for the ones we have. Any questions?
I just have one. Can you explain to us the difference of live, halt, and inert cartridges?
Yeah, so live cartridge would be what the officer carries on duty, that, um, actually carries the electronic charge.
Okay.
Um, the other ones are for training purposes, which is part of, part of all that is all officers are required to train on the new system.
Okay. So live is what's in the field, halted and inert are for internal training and certification purposes.
Okay.
And, and just another question with these, because we're, we're buying seven of them, we've got more than seven officers. I'm assuming then that those are, they, they use them when they're on shift and they put them back for the next officer to.
Correct, yeah, currently we have six of the X two tasers, um, which rotate throughout. They, they all have their individual batteries. New system is actually a rechargeable series, so it's going to actually, hopefully the, the maintenance costs will be a little bit lower in, in the backend. But yes, they will be rotated through the officers. And that's obviously due to budgetary restraints. Buying one for each officer would be considered more.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion approving a five-year purchase contract with Axon for tasers.
So moved.
Questions or comments? Uh, oh, it's money. Please call it all, please.
Mr. Palace, journey?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Spoder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coath?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion yes.
All right, uh, so before us, we have a facade improvement grant, uh, package, if you will, there are three of them. We do have a consent agenda. The theory is, is that we would, uh, do one motion for, uh, to approve all of them, but we would have to approve the consent agenda as a package, so. I guess the question is, we've never really done well with consent agendas in general.
Mr. Khan didn't know that when he put the agenda together, so he doesn't.
Yeah, so, so I guess.
Decided to let it have a shot.
So I, I, so I, I guess I would ask, uh, Mr. Squall, you're here and prepared to talk about each application.
Sure.
So I guess I would ask that Mr. Squall will talk about the applications individually. And if you are uncomfortable at the end of his, uh, explanation, we will pull them, we will pull the consent agenda apart. Is that fair? Am I allowed to do that?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Sir, sir.
Good evening.
I'm sorry.
Six questions instead.
Well, yeah.
I'm guessing there's only.
If you, you guys just.
Yeah, you would only pull something out of the consent if you're like, well, I think these two are seventy-five or fifty percent or twenty-five, but I don't think this one is, and then you'd have to pull that out.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so however you want to do it, do you guys just want to, uh, ask Mr. Squall some questions about the applications or do you want Mr. Squall to talk one?
Does anybody have any questions on?
I think it might be good just to give a little bit of background.
A little overview on each of them?
Yeah.
Um, I'll take it in the same order as they appear on the agenda.
Pretend that you're a public comment, though, and you only get two minutes each. Exactly, sir.
Hopefully I'll be quicker than that on utilities. The first one is fairly straightforward, it's a sign application. This was one applicant that was receptive to, um, suggestions with respect to what type of sign, what it should look like. Um, you have, I hope you have in your packet.
We do.
Photos of the artistic rendition, it's a paddle sign hanging, much like the ones that are, you're seeing many more of. I don't think it's illuminated, it's just a paddle sign. Um, there's a proposal in there for a total cost of just under fifteen hundred, it's fourteen ninety-three eighty. It went through the beautification and BDC committees and their recommendations were, uh, a seventy-five percent award on the sign. Does anyone have any questions with respect to the sign proposal for this application?
Thank you.
If not, I'll run with the second one.
You did great on it.
Close to two minutes, hopefully.
It was very impressive, though.
Pardon?
It's color coded, it's full, it's really.
I still don't know how to keep track. Uh, next is State Farm. Uh, this was an applicant that came for, um, a permit application to install an illuminated LED thirty-foot long, twenty-five-foot long, three-foot-high illuminated sign. He was open and receptive to, um, our suggestions to modify his grant application and, well, actually to apply for the grant program for signs. His is actually an awning, much like you see on, uh, two other businesses downtown, and their signage is silk screened or printed on the awning. Uh, I spoke with him today and asked him, well, actually, we talked about the fact that it was going before the board tonight, but what impressed me was him stepping forward and saying that he likes the outcome of the front of the building now that the awning is up and what it looks like. He said, I am so glad, not only for the village's grant program assisting with the cost, but the advice, direction, and suggestions of what we might like to see in the downtown. This is one of many applicants that are very receptive to, um, suggestions and ideas, so. Uh, what you have is a grant, uh, application, uh, for a total of thirty-five hundred and ninety dollars. The awning and the silk screening is the same company that produced and manufactured, um, the Hampshire Socials awning. Uh, and that's actually what drove his, uh, finished product, that's what he wanted it to look like, so. He's very pleased with the outcome, uh, the unit is installed and, um, the feedback I've gotten is folks saying it looks great, but. Um, does anyone have any questions with respect to the net grant application? Uh, both beautification and BDC supported it with a, a seventy-five percent recommendation as well. Uh, so you see the net cost on there, so it works out to be twenty-six ninety-two and fifty cents, seventy-five percent. The third and final half, where you generated the most discussion, uh, in a positive light and excitement. Uh, you have a new, uh, business moving into a vacant building, so we're eliminating a vacancy. But more importantly, what the business is going to bring and how the business facade is going to appear from the street. Let me just talk briefly about what the, the business owner is intending to bring in. They have, it'll be a, a mixed business, I'll call it. It's going to have three barber chairs on the left half of the building, this is dividing wall, it runs right down the center of the building. They're going to have three barber chairs on the left half. I thought originally the ladies beauty boutique or salon was going to be on the right half. Uh, that's partly true. What it is, is they're going to install a separate door to enter that right half, and it's going to be a ladies boutique with, um, what, flowers and scarves and, uh, hats and shirts and purses and, uh, things. It'll create a new retail environment that doesn't, as far as I know, doesn't exist in the downtown. What's interesting, uh, apparently someone's in marketing, is the, uh, women that come for, uh, a hair appointment will have to walk through the boutique to get to the beauty salon. And it's, oh, you have to get this figured out. She goes, yeah, yeah, the ladies beauty salon will be in the back right. And then in the back left, they've got an area that's being reserved for what they will do, what's called aesthetics, uh, waxings and facials, so it'll be providing, uh, three different services and one retail presence that doesn't exist. So from that standpoint, everyone was very interested to hear what they had to say about the facade brand. Yeah, she told me, here it is, clothes, jewelry, hats, gloves, and scarves, is what she intends to sell and market there. Uh, the building owner, uh, yes, and the business owner, uh, both, Sue Getzelman, her mother, uh, owned and operated, her name was May Getzelman, and she owned and operated a ladies clothing store on State Street, right across from middle school, where it's a two, two flat right now. And later she moved it to the downtown in Hampshire where the Hampshire Socials at, or the, um, Copper Barrel's at. Anyway, she's very excited to open this business.
Called the Daisy Mae Shop, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct. It's kind of a coming full circle, whatever the case, yeah, uh, she's real excited about that. So let's get on to the program itself, uh, the grant, uh, application. I have a few, I'll pass them to you, artistic.
I think we have.
Okay, okay. Everything that she intends to do is designed to not replace what's there, but to embellish and build upon what's already been done. She plans, plans to do an application on the front of the building that will project out. It'll complement what's there, this is not designed to replace what's there, uh, with the exception of, uh, a second entry door for men's entrance and women's entrance. Uh, essentially, the purpose of the building is, is changing a little bit. And the last thing that she has, uh, that's a little bit fluid, and she hasn't finalized that decision with the general contractor yet. And that is some type, do you happen to have this photograph in?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, what this is, what she's talking about is this aluminum awning that projects from the building. And it's different than a canvas awning, obviously. She's not sure which of the two they're going to finalize, it's going to depend on when the general contractor gets in there. But the application of the grant, uh, includes the worst-case scenario in terms of cost. And that's what I wanted to make clear. They may scale this back and instead of the aluminum, if it's too costly, they're going to do a, a canvas or a, a tarp awning, like you see in this rendition. So this will be much less than this. And the grant application you have for you is this, the more expensive of the two. And I said, when it comes down to it, just document your expenses and submit for reimbursement. But the grant application you've got is for, um, a total of twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. Uh, both the beautification and the BDC made a recommendation, uh, at seventy-five percent. Uh, one of her other goals is her intent with the color change or the addition of these, this application is to complement the clock, uh, which is black and gold of the street clock. And the front of the building will have black and gold on it as well. Um, that's her thought process behind it. She wants to create, in her words, uh, a place that will pop and really people will drive past and go, they'll turn heads, and, uh, based on her artistic rendition, I wouldn't disagree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Squall.
Yep.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Squall? Does anybody have any want or desire to separate the consent agenda as it is presented?
I just have a question about the metal awning thing, how far out are they suggesting this will project?
It doesn't have it pinned down exactly, but she's also got to deal with existing village ordinances and how much it can project off the front of that building. So when she goes to apply for a building permit, she's going to be subject to the existing village ordinances and building constraints in terms of what she can and can't do. That picture is a little ambitious, it probably looks like it's about twenty-five feet.
Exactly. It's not going to be that. There's no way that that's.
I was going to say, this is like Michigan now, you know?
It is.
A little.
That's exactly where it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, because.
Yeah, but you also have to figure the sidewalk there is like, like twice or three times this wide in front of that building.
I'm just curious what, how far it could converge based on our ordinances. What, what should we be?
Certainly get that to you.
Expecting.
She's not going to get that, I'll tell you that. I mean, our, I think our, our awnings now, I think, can only come out thirty-six inches.
I believe, I don't know if that's, and they coded up, well, you have. Come look in there.
Okay. That's, that's really my only area of.
The only comment I'll say is out of BDC, all of the projects before you got unanimous votes for what the recommendations were.
Yep.
Okay, while they're looking up the code, do, do you guys want to separate this out or are you guys good voting on consent agenda? As it is presented.
I personally don't care for consent agendas, I'll go with it this time, but I, I, I absolutely steer away from that. Consent agendas are never good. They lump too much stuff in and try and fly it under radar.
I'll take, I'll take a, I'll accept a motion or entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda as presented unless otherwise stated by trustee.
So moved.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I just want to answer trustee Boarder's question, so it can be five feet from the building, but it has to be at least four feet from the curb. So our curbs, so our curbs.
It's about eight feet, about four feet, two, two squares of about four feet each.
And so how far are they from the curb? Four feet.
So they can be halfway.[1784.96]
So that's thirty-six inches?
That's about what the other ones are. But it'd be forty-eight, I think.
And how high would it have to be?
It has to be seven and a half, seven feet, four inches.
Okay. Having lots of tall people in my family, I'm concerned to the.
That's even taller than Rich Hill.
I understand that, but I also understand that every generation, people get a little taller. And I don't wanna find, sorry. Uh, that, you know, two generations from now, we've got a lot of people just getting into that, cause that's not really.
Yeah, you don't want them coming to your house and bugging you.
Yeah, I don't wanna.
You can, I think it would, it would match what the other awning.
That is attached to the building is a lot harder on the scalp than.
Agreed.
Than staying on.
From personal experience?
Yes, actually multiple times. So I, I just.
Agreed.
I'm just concerned that maybe that one is not. And yes, I am holding my head.
We have a first and a second, not to cut you off.
We do, I just thank you for that answer.
This is a consent, this is the approval of the consent agenda, not it?
No, this is it. This is it. All three things together.
All three things, okay. Then.
Is there any discussion about the percentage coverage? Any questions?
No, this is just for the consent agenda.
No, this is it.
This is to approve all three.
Yeah.
We approved the consent agenda. We're approving all of the items in the consent agenda.
Or not.
Or not.
And the BDC then is still under their uh, budgetary constraints?
Yes, the, in the memorandum, you'll see there's still at or over fifty percent of the budget left. Which was still a fifty percent budget because we had projects from last year to continue to pay.
I, I know, before we vote, I know we talked about seventy-five percent of fully funding that a while ago. We don't have to fully fund that, but I know we haven't passed. I, I I believe you were trying to steer away from that, so more funds available for more projects. Is that still the recommendation of the BDC to go with seventy-five percent or?
For these three, it was at seventy-five percent. There were other projects discussed that aren't before the board that were discussed at lower percentages for multitude of reasons.
Okay.
They're not at a point yet to be presented to the board.
Correct.
But for these three in particular, it was at seventy-five percent.
Have, have these, have any of these three businesses gotten a grant before?
No.
Not under, not under the current ownership. The only one that's close would be that we did, did we do a facade improvement grant for the stylen state when it was another owner years ago. They redid the facade years, years ago and the building has changed hands.
But these, these applicants have never applied before.
Correct. I just, I just, that's an accurate statement. I also, I think you were on the board when we approved. Maybe not.
Yeah, it's only been a couple.
It's been, when the stylists owned the building, they redid the outside of the building to.
The brick and the stone.
They redid the, the, and that kinda stuff.
This here and this brick was part of a previous facade.
Okay, but so it's pretty recent.
State Farm was part of.
Two different uh, applicants. One was the building owner for the facade work. This is the agent who leases the property and is the business owner inside. He's, he hasn't come before us before and this is his first application.
Okay.
What if this is the second application for that property, correct?
Correct. For two of the properties, it is the second application for that property.
Okay.
Thank you.
One for a different property owner and one for the building owner and then the business owner.
Right.
Interesting, thank you. Um, we're on discussion here. I, and I'm still just not happy with the fact that it's carte blanche up to seventy-five percent. Um, I really think from everywhere I look, it's a matter of it's, you know, twenty-five percent with a max of five thousand, or they're really pushing it with a max of ten thousand out. But I, I, I mean, I really think the businesses need to have more skin in the game on this. It is their business. It does help beautify the downtown. I understand, we let things go to crap, you know, and we need to fix it. And so I get that. Um, but I just think that that kinda money is just outrageous to be able to hand to somebody and, and I would really love to see it reduced. So, I love the projects. I love what it's doing, but I'm gonna be voting no because I need that addressed where we reduce and put some kinda constraints on it. I just feel like it's just too much right now. So.
Do we know how much this is improving the um, assessed valuation of these properties? And therefore the amount of revenue that we are receiving in taxes?
I would say it would be negligible, simply be a process like, you know, this is a facade improvement. It's not um, you know, that we have big, yeah, big.
For these particular projects.
We, we do make the assessor very aware of these improvements, though. And I personally feel like they should be increased, but uh, they have not been traditionally.
And part of the application, the applicant agrees to not contest increased property taxes. Hasn't always been followed, but that's what they agreed to.
Okay.
Actually, since that was made a condition of the uh, facade program, it has been followed. It was the two older brands that.
Oh, you're correct. Thank you. You're correct.
I have a question for, for you, RSL. This is being voted on all three here. If you're concerned, just the one uh, you're gonna vote no for all three, or is it you just want, you think that that one particular uh, stylen state is out of proportion for this? So you gotta vote for all three no, or do you want to vote for these separately?
No, it's, it's on the consent agenda and I think it's, for me, it's the, it is the prop, the, the point of how we're doing it now. And I really think, I mean, right now we could pull this apart and go twenty-five percent on this one, but I mean, you've got two very small amounts here. Um, and then you've got a larger one too. Um, we're going with it, we're going with it on consent. And I think for me, I just, before I continue voting on these at all, I wanted to dress, I want it limited for, so that we're not handing seventy-five percent of a hundred thousand dollar project to one particular owner. I think it has to have a max of five thousand, ten thousand, or even if it is twenty thousand. But I, I think there has to be some kinda constraint there. Right now it's just handing seventy-five percent of somebody's um, uh, upgrades, which I think are great, but that's the business owner that needs to do that. And any business owner that would go in there, buy a business, is gonna have to do those improvements. If some of them have not, their business suffers because of it. But I think to be prudent with the way that we spend the money, and I understand some of it is coming from the sale, is coming from the sales tax on food. Um, I really think that there, we could do a lot more good with it if there was more limitations. And, and people will think, I've gotta really figure out how much I can spend on this and how much I can't. Um, but I just think handing seventy-five percent of the project is outrageous. So, you know, I think the projects are great. I think the concept is great, but I think it and I've been asking for this for two years now. So, you know, when we were overspending on it, we're not overspending anymore and I'm grateful for that. But there has to be a limit on this. There's gotta be a maximum amount. I mean, if we wanna save seventy-five percent with a maximum of ten thousand dollars or a maximum of twenty thousand, that, that at least is some kind of a max. Right now it's carte blanche and I, I'm just not comfortable with the way that is designed. So.
So we, we do have a first and a second on the consent agenda. Um, is there any other discussion? Or can we call the roll? Ms. Kirk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Scotter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
No.
Bush, yes, it's five.
Next, now is everybody's favorite time of the meeting. It is the time for staff reports. And we welcome back Mr. Poulsen electronically. It's taken a little while for us to get there. Thank you. You look beautiful on our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, uh, for those of you that don't know, the bar on the top of it, uh, we've had since COVID died and we had to buy a new one and figure it. That was a lot of fun, but it's all set up. And Mr. Poulsen looks good. Can you do that thing where you focus on him or? Doesn't matter, doesn't.
It's good enough.
Doesn't matter. Anybody have any questions about either of us, please?
I think maybe the engineer oughta go through a little bit of it.
I was just trying to be expedient because I, I know how much you were rushing me through the rest of it.
No, rambling and going Russian is two different things.
I'll start with a question. The updates on the Safe Rock School states that there was a meeting held on August sixth with IDOT. Where are we at in the process of being able to kick off that project, start construction and, and move forward?
As far as our construction.
Well, like in the process, where, where, where are we at?
Uh, we're still hoping for next year for construction, so we're in the process. We've submitted for the environmental and cultural clearances. Uh, we've submitted to IDOT, uh, our proposed public notification. And we're waiting for IDOT to approve that and get us some dates uh, back when they're available to hold a uh, public informational meeting that's required. And we're hoping to get that scheduled mid to late October.
Can you, can you clarify? I, I understand environmental. What is cultural?
Cultural.
I know, I know what cultural means, but in this case of the application process.
Like historical properties or whatever, this kinda stuff. So, the reason that we were given by FHWA for, that's the Federal Highway Authority. Um, was because, uh, you know, the buildings are more than forty years old and we're putting sidewalk where sidewalk was not before. They decided to require a cultural clearance uh, be filed with a review for historical significantly, significant historical buildings or, or other items.
I think that pretty much tells you why these things take forever.
Yeah.
It could take about six months to get through. And I that.
It's taking a lot longer than that.
The cultural clearance part, good. Yes.
I mean, it's just, it amazes me that IDOT is so slow and that the Federal Highway Authority is requiring these additional things when this is literally to give kids a safe way to walk to school.
Yeah.
And it will take about five or six years so that kindergartner will be in sixth grade when.
And it won't be walked into.
Sidewalk. It just, it's terrible that it takes that long. I mean, the.
Think about how excited we were when we won the grant.
Yeah. I mean, you want the kids to be safe. That's what we're all excited about.
By the way, now we skipped a year, but now we're applying for another year.
Wow.
So maybe a ten years.
So maybe. Yeah, that's not, Mr. Poulsen, I get that. But it just, wow. Six years to get approval for a sidewalk.
Any other comments or questions about either the building report or the engineering report?
Um, I don't know if this is a question for the engineering part. I just noticed, or who this is, who this is for in general. Um, when we resurfaced Hannibal, it just so happened that that project started on the very first day of school, which that was a nightmare. So I don't know if we, who, I'm not, I'm not criticizing. I know we, that certain things are out of our control. I'm just, I'm asking if we could please consider projects that affect bus routes or are thorough fairs for multiple car riders to get to school. If you can please consider just consulting with the two, three hundred schedule to maybe bet up a few days or, cause I, I watched so many, a couple buses tried to get through there and the street was blocked and it created chaos for those bus drivers and commuters. And so if, I don't know if that's for engineering or.
That's, that's on us. We should, we should have thought of that. That's one thing we didn't.
And I, please don't take that.
A lot of times when we give the contractor, they'll have a window of two weeks to do the work and we don't know exactly what day they're in.
Okay.
And have a crew, but we could have told them avoid that day. We told them.
Honestly, didn't mean to.
We did some other things to try and avoid that day, but that's one that we didn't.
Okay, I would appreciate that. I know those bus drivers would greatly appreciate that too. Thank you, no problem.
Okay. Next, we have the accounts payable personnel in the very large amount of a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'm making a motion to approve them.
Questions or comments? Ms. Kirk, you can leave. Sorry, we, we motioned too fast.
Ms. Scotter?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
All right, stop.
Okay, she's got a bag.
Uh, Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
First, six, zero.
All right. Next to the uh, smaller amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars and thirty-six cents. Any questions?
Oh, um.
I see service.
Page five.
Page five.
Um, EMQ Construction, the bike path and ADA ramp on State. I just wanted, I thought that was paid for by the builder, so.
Who was the, I'm sorry, how much is the amount?
Four thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
So they did the bike path, but then we had to do the handicap ramp at the north end. So the concrete portion, the village paid for. We hired a contractor to do that.
Okay, and it was that at each spot where it suffered?
It's just the one place on the north end where it dumps into the, into uh, Town Place Road. So it had to be like a fifteen foot long.
A lot of money. Five Gs, a lot of money.
It was, it was the curb cut and the handicap ramp and it had to be that long. So, so we had to write a slope on it.
Okay, and it's just by that town road right there, not by Allen?
Right.
It doesn't go up.
Oh, okay. I don't remember. Okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions?
I don't know.
Hearing done, we'll entertain, uh, entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. Move on two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and two dollars and thirty-six cents. Questions, comments, any more concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Phil?
Hi.
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Ms. Scotter?
Hi.
Bush, case six, two.
Okay, thank you very much, staff and officials. Oh, wait, we have the building report committee reports. I was thinking we talked enough about BDC today, but do we have anything else to add?
BDC will meet next week, next Wednesday. It's the second Wednesday of the month, same bat channel, same bat place.
Public Works?
Nothing to report.
I have a question for Public Works. Uh, committee vote, really from Mr. Hedges under Public Works. Now that the, the one percent passed, what's the next steps to break ground and start moving forward with Public Works?
Um, I just received a seven hundred and sixty-eight page update about fifteen minutes ago. I'll be happy to send it to you.
You're hitting us taking soil samples.
As was, that's Mr. Swallow, if you could in two minutes.
We're making a lot of progress. We expect to be in the building by January of twenty-sixth, January, February twenty-sixth.
So a year from this January.
Okay, great.
All right, that's great. Thank you. And they've already taken soil samples.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, uh, any, well, wait a minute. We, budget, do you have any?
Uh.
Okay, great. New business or other announcements?
I, I had a question about we, I know this was about a month ago when we discussed the variance for the greenhouse. Have we had a permit pulled on that?
They implied today.
Was that within our thirty?
Period.
Our forty-five day?
Okay.
They applied, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, one quick announcement. Uh, actually I wanna read something. Uh, Dave Starett had to leave. He's not been feeling really, he's been feeling really bad today. Allergies in his face. He said it's about to explode. It was a quote, but he did, he said, I've been, uh, I really wanted to tell each one of the board members, thank you tonight uh, for the Public Works garage. He said, I've been with the village for sixteen years and we grew, I grew the, our facility fourteen years ago. It's been a long wait, six billing attempts, six billing attempts. Uh, Mr. Coe can attest to that. Um, but we did it, but we did it right this time. I'll never forget this night. Thank you. And there's an American flag.
I do remember on the night that uh, you were hired, trustee Coe said, we have to do this now or we're never gonna.
I do remember that.
And so.
It only took me five years.
And all Public Works went home today. Everybody is orange. Their hair's orange, their shirts are orange. My guys all went home early. Uh, it's mold in the, in the grass because it's so dry. You're, you're sniffing it, it's getting in your, it's bad.
Um, I only have one thing. Um, I, I, the clerk has been hounding me to figure out if we're gonna do this Christmas parade again this year or not. Uh, and so I defer to the rest of the board. Is that something that you guys wanna do? Santa available in December?
Yeah, we should do the parade. Don't we do a little tree lighting and?
Sure, okay. And then if so, the dates that are available at this time are the seventh and the fourteenth. We typically do it of, of December.
Oh. Clarification.
Is that, okay. So, you know, so it's, we typically do it the first weekend as if, is to create a buffer for other holiday events and um, I don't know, it's warmer typically, except that one year when it was fourteen below. Oh.
Indeed.
And rainy.
So it is, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
So, um, my kinda thought process would be the seventh. Um, for, what do you think?
Not November three?
That's the Sunday of Thanksgiving.
People travel.
Oh, Saturday.
I, I agree on that.
Or the Saturday.
Yeah.
Or the Saturday.
Earlier we had it done, I mean, the trees not late. Be and the more time you can spend.
Okay, so it sounds like December, are we all good with that? Can you, can you check with Santa?
Yeah, I did hear that Santa is prepared to throw candy.
Yeah.
Out there, good.
We don't like diamonds, probably. I'll look at whatever time we did last year, I think it was five o'clock and we lit the tree at five thirty or something to that nature. I can't remember exactly what we did, but I think it's around the five o'clock timeframe is what we did.
Will Santa be able to get through the parade?
We'll make sure he gets back here.
Okay, awesome. Yeah. Okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.